First, I would like to say that this is a data-driven choice or decision to bring us forward, but it's also driven from the heart in terms of just simply the right thing to do. The city does have an ordinance on hand in regards to senior property tax exemptions. It was last adjusted in 2007. For the people that are in the audience, what's in the council packet presently, right now, exemptions amount for an individual are $15,000. Again, that was last adjusted in 2007. So in 2007, if you are a single person, based upon the US government data, approximately $10,200 was considered the poverty level. Okay? If you extrapolate that forward to 2025, for one person, the poverty level is $15,650. Again, if you look at the CPI inflation calculator in regards to what $15,000 had the purchasing power in 2007, and you carry that forward to 2025, that is $23,209.05. What is not in the packet, and I'll just pass this down now to my colleagues, but I'll read it out loud, is the CPI inflation calculator for two-person household. So again, we spoke about $15,000 for an individual, and what's right now in the books in regards to the City of Newcastle property tax exemption is $25,000 for a family of two, if you will, or two persons that are on the deed, if you will. So if you take the CPI calculator, you would get, I'm sorry, in regards to what is, for $30,000, it was $30,000, I apologize, for a couple. If you take the $30,000 and carry that forward to 2025 through inflation, that's now $46,418.09. So the thought here is that we definitely need to make an adjustment. It is data-driven. We are a small municipality. We want to do what we can for our people and protect them. Mr. Stan, I would love to do what the county does, they have $200 million in their budget. We don't, but if we get that legacy fund and you help us fund it, I promise we'll raise the senior tax exemption. I would also like to add that there's been some research in regards to what other municipalities are presently doing. For the folks that are in the audience, it's in my colleagues' council packets. So the City of Smyrna does $35,000 for an individual and $40,000 for two people. Delaware City, our sister city, does $20,000 for an individual person. So these are just some examples. I'll pause, see what my colleagues have to say and chime in at a later time. Oh, I would like to offer up this data point as well. So the city does have this program presently, right now. There's about $44,000 worth of credits, if you will, that the city gives out. So you could also look at it as like a revenue loss for the city with these current thresholds of $15,000 and $30,000. So I'll just pause there.
I have a quick comment if we can, someone could support this motion. I would just like to make a revision to Section 1B regarding, as we're well past the usual May deadline, with this being a different budget year, we, I would like to edit the dates to say September 1st, 2025, for fiscal year July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, and prior to May 1st of each subsequent year.
So, so you're talking about for the next year?
Yes, but she can make a suggestion.
Excuse me. The council is speaking.
Is that what you're saying, going forward for the next?
For this year, for this fiscal year, if you wanted to go into effect for this fiscal year.
Oh, yes, yes, I would like to amend that. Thank you for mentioning that. This dovetails into something that I neglected to mention. So right now, with this senior tax credit program, it's May 1st is the deadline in which Ms. Delgado interviews or solicits, doesn't solicit, but takes appointments from residents who may potentially be eligible. This would not be an ordinance, I think this would be more of a policy and procedure, but I would like to request that the council and/or city administrator entertain the idea of extending that time period. If this does pass, essentially, it would allow people to come into the office to apply for it. Finally, I would like to say is that this concept was conjured up earlier in the year, in about January. I knew we had a council election in April, and I held on to this because I didn't want this to be considered an election issue or something if somebody was for it or not for it. Thank you.
So if I understood Ms. Dantillo correctly, we need a motion from a council member, of course, to amend this section, a motion to amend the current ordinance in Section 1B to make the deadline September 1st, 2025
Correct.
for application for this tax relief, and May 1st of 2026 and subsequent years. Sorry, is that correct?
We can just make the motion to have it be effective immediately with the deadline of September 1st, 2025.
Okay, and then leave this word at the way it is because it says May 1st of each subsequent year.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, so amendment is to, oh, to make the, shoot, make this, go ahead.
Amend Section 4 of the ordinance?
Oh, to make it effective.
Effective immediately.
Effective immediately, which is already in there, yes.
And allowing application until September.
Okay, so we just simply add to Section 4, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption and approval, and we will, and the deadline for applications in 2025 is extended to September 1st. Okay, so I move that we amend Section 4 to say that this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption and approval, and the deadline for application for the tax relief is extended to September 1st, 2025. Do we need to specify and then May 1st, that's it? Okay, period. So to May 1st or to September 1st, 2025? Is there a second to this motion?
Second, second.
Okay. Is there any discussion of this amendment?
Not amendment, but discussion of.
Well, we got to deal with the amendment, and then we can discuss the full ordinance. So are we ready to vote on this amendment? Okay, all in favor of amending Section 4 to extend the deadline for applying for property tax relief this year to September 1st? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the amendment is approved. I have another amendment to suggest, and then we can discuss. In Section, so that we don't get into this bind again with, nobody looks at it and years go by and costs increase, I would propose adding to Section 1A after the amount's being specified, that this amount shall be adjusted each year based on the Social Security cost of living adjustment amount, and then that new rate would be applicable in the following fiscal year. So, because the Social Security colas come out in the fall, and so if it's adjusted, you know, whatever they determine the increase is, and that increase would be applied to these income limits for the following year's tax relief. And that way, that will keep these amounts, keep pace with inflation, rather than us having to do a new ordinance every few years to bring it up to date. It would happen automatically. So is there any, is there a second to that amendment proposal? If I move that we add that.
Can I add to that amendment? Since it's the same section, just because the amounts identified are not currently, so the $40,000 right now is lower than 40...
Forty-six thousand.
Forty-six thousand, so I would, I would move to amend that number to be 46,000.
One amendment at a time.
Okay, sorry.
One amendment at a time. So we have a motion, that's how we're going to have a session.
Is there a second on my amendment to provide a cost of living adjustment?
So is that percentage today, or what?
I don't remember. Does anybody remember what the Social Security cost was? I think it was like 2.3 or 2.2, 2.5? But it varies each year because it's dependent on the increase in the Consumer Price Index. I think for the year from October to the following September, I think that's the period they base the Social Security colas on.
I think we should debate the overall ordinance before we start looking at other amendments. And the reason I say that is because I feel like we're overlooking the elephant in the room. So we've adjusted with this ordinance to increase the amount of people eligible. What we haven't identified is that the prior assessed value, the first $32,000 of assessed valuation was exempted, but we haven't touched that at all. So that's the bigger piece in the puzzle. So, you know, we can have more people apply, but the exemption is actually going to be very, very small. And that's the number I think we need to look at. I'm not against the income limitation being raised, but I think we need to go from $32,000 to something a little bit more significant, especially since, you know, our assessments have risen, you know, many percentages.
So I'm going to advise the council, and we're going to have that debate, but I got an amendment. I got to deal with the amendment. So there's either a second to the amendment offered by the council president, or there's not.
Second, second.
Okay, all in favor of amending Section 1A to add the sentence that these limits shall be increased each year based on the Social Security cost of living adjustment? So all in favor? Aye, any opposed?
No.
Four, so we're clear for the record. Is that four in favor of my guess?
I'm going, I did.
So the amendment holds.
Joe, do you mind if I provide the data?
And just the reason we might know is I would much rather us focus on the $32,000 and make it a bigger percentage for the lowest income families in the city.
Okay, so, I mean, that's basically another amendment, isn't it? Well, to change that amount, the $32,000.
That's correct, Madam Chair, so we'll talk over that amendment.
Well, do you have a number that you would like to suggest?
Well, I think that's a, you know, discussion. Like, I'm looking at the number from 1983, and the average household value for residents was 41,700, so the $32,000 out of that is 77%. Right. But the $32,000 out of new value, which is 268,000, is 12%. So, you know, if we're going by keeping it three quarters, we're looking at 206,000. But, you know, the county is 173,000, so that's still better than what we're doing, which is 65% of that value. So I'm, you know, I can see merit on both. I don't know what was the conversation back in 1983 when this was set at $32,000, but I'm not familiar. Joe, I don't know if you're familiar with the conversation the county had, what 173 was there. You know, the county's percentage carried over, so it's whatever that the county was. Because I'll be willing to discuss that, you know, because I agree with your point. I love the idea of increasing eligibility, but I also want to make sure that we're making the amendments to this as well, that makes sense. And this is one of those things, I wonder if we bring it for, I know this is not on the agenda tomorrow, but if we can bring it for a budget meeting because of the urgency of this, so we can see the number impact that the city administrator could prepare potentially for us, to see what it plays out on the 47,000 of revenue currently, you know, credited to people, what it would be at 173, let's say, the county has, or any other different options that we could potentially talk. It's tough to talk about amendment without knowing what that means, but at the same time, this would be my priority as a councilperson. Seems like yours as well, and probably other colleagues here.
Then that's your priority.
Yes.
You do have time before the end of the budget year, with all the meetings you have together, and you will have to consider a budget ordinance because of the state law. You usually do that by resolution, but the state law requires an ordinance. To deal with that issue, you've already had a public hearing on this. You can have a discussion, you've met your charter requirements, your code requirements. You can table this to a future meeting to allow that, that would be your priority this time.
Can this be added to tomorrow's meeting, probably?
No.
As we understand.
Councilperson Day, I appreciate what you said in regards to the threshold. This was drafted months ago when we didn't even have the county assessment numbers. And honestly, this is something worth doing, but at the same time is costing the city money, so to speak, right? And we all know the situation of the budget, and we're all looking for money. So the thought was to increase it and to do better, but also recognizing the financial situation that the city is in. But I certainly would be in favor of increasing that above $32,000, $50,000, or whatever, you know, the body deems appropriate. Thank you for raising it.
So if we left the income levels as they're specified, 25 and 40, but raised the amount of the assessed value of the whole that would be excluded from taxation, that might be a compromise between?
Well, and I think this is one of the ones where we have to take a lot of bites out of the apple, and that's why I didn't want an automatic increase in the income. I would rather see us add $10,000 of exemption, you know, we'll start with a base, and maybe next year we add another $10,000 of exemption, and then another $10,000 of exemption to get up where, so that it is kind of commensurate to where we're at, you know, where we went in the base.
Because we don't know how much money is going to be there wherever we lost.
Right.
That's the unknown number. But I did feel like the $15,000 and those amounts were just low, you know?
Agreed, agreed.
So where are we? Do we want to table this and put it on an agenda for a budget meeting that we have time to announce it for, and that will also give us time to perhaps do some analysis, looking at the assessed values as to how many more? The thing is, we know how many more properties, we know what the assessed values are, but we don't know how many people meet in higher income levels. You know, we know how many people have qualified with the lower limits, but we don't know, obviously, how many more people might, excuse me, if you want to have a conversation, could you please step in the lobby so that we can go on with the meeting? That's the problem, we can't project how many more people are going to qualify. And no amount of study and analysis is going to come up with that number because we don't know the income of all of our residents.
So what it stands right now is you could have a motion to table, to a future meeting to be decided before June 30th. That's motion one. Motion two would be a motion to change the numbers here. Or number three, we've got an ordinance and amendment, so we could move to approve. So that's your three options at this point. Table, amend, or vote on?
So if we vote on this and through this tonight, that does not preclude us from coming back with another ordinance to change the $32,000 of assessed valuation?
That's correct. That would take two months, obviously, to do.
That's what I was asking, is if we wouldn't get it done in time, and we got to have another ordinance, we have to have another hearing.
Yes, you'd have to have enough, you know, you got a lot of meetings this month, so it may be shorter than normal, but.
So the only solution is, I mean, that I see is to table it.
Yeah, I'm leaning towards tabling, but I have a question for city administrator, if you can look into the property reassessment file that you received from the county. Do you mind checking and seeing if the file itself that we have been using to make projections currently, not budget meetings, is already deducting $173,000 for certain properties? Because I think that would help in making this decision. If the answer is yes, then what we're seeing in our budget meeting so far is already accounting for this adjustment that the county has provided. So I think it would be great to know that. I, I think Mr. Stan mentioned that there's several hundred parcels that have that deduction. So I want to say that what we have been doing so far is already including the deduction of the county.
The county, yeah.
Yes, $173,000, sorry, but if you could confirm that for the, and I'm leaning towards tabling, I know we have to vote, but if we could have that in front of us by then, that would be very helpful for us as a council to know that we have already accounted for this revenue loss by whatever the tax rate we're proposing to be. That's just my answer before I leave.
I have, I have one question for the body respectfully. We've heard at countless meetings, and it's the question that we can never always solve, that some people are unaware, right, people don't know, right? But we can certainly do more. The question for the table that I have right now is can we or would the council consider passing an update to September 2025? That would allow us to put it in weekly, put it in the crier, put it on the city website, et cetera, to let people know that the senior tax exemption window has been extended till September.
Can I ask a question? More important to me now is how that work, how the history feels, let's say, in July? Would you hold on some of those bills eventually, or just curious?
So we could send all the bills out as we normally do, and then those who want to continue applying through September can continue applying, and we would make the adjustment.
So their bill would just be amended after?
Yes, if their mortgage company paid, they could just have a credit on their account that would roll to the next year.
Thank you.
Why would it roll to the next year if we would not be refunded on that?
I don't even know how many people are going to apply.
I presume we would just stay in the escrow account, is that?
The money sits in the escrow account until the mortgage company pays the tax. The person doesn't have it, we don't have it.
And it would show up on their next year's bill that they have a credit and they're on their current bill, and it would be reduced, and they would be fully aware that they have this credit and would pay less action.
Their escrow's going to go up, they're going to be paying more now, and they're going to want that money sitting here as a credit.
But it's not sitting here if it's in escrow.
It goes back to.
It goes, but the mortgage company holds the escrow, yeah.
But if they're paying upfront to pay, that means now they're going to have a credit on our side, because we're going to have the money. Correct, the escrow.
No, we're going to have the money for this year. It'll show up on their bill for next year as a credit, and it'll be applied, and the mortgage company will send it last night. I don't know how many more people are going to apply. I cannot say that we can manage issuing hundreds of thousands of dollars of, you know, reimbursements to people.
Understood, but we should be holding your money.
My understanding is that we're not, because I think what hap, I'm not an expert councilperson as well. What I think would happen is, let's say, in your escrow, a certain amount of money, it would move to us, but we would send, change back after this person has applied for this program. So it would just, you know, roll back to that amount later. So it was, it's not like you, unless it's not mortgage case, it's not like you would be having less money. Your escrow temporarily have less money in it, but then it will be refunded back to that company.
Understood, but their escrow's going to go up, they're going to start paying more, and we're going to have a credit on our side because we decided to reduce it for them, which is great, but we're going to have that money. And now their escrow's going to go up, and they're going to want that money to start paying actually on their escrow.
But the escrow doesn't send us the money monthly, they send it yearly.
But they're sending the full amount because we haven't deducted it yet, because we don't know of the credit situation, so the credit's going to end up on our side.
Right, for this year.
For this year.
And this is just because this is so late in the game. We, again, have this back for the May deadline, we're going to be in this predicament. So for this one year, we're going to have an issue.
Understood.
There's no issue with someone having a credit on their account, that's fine. Like I said, it's going to reflect on their bill for next year, that they have this credit, their bill's going to be reduced.
Well, I'm just going to point out, I am in disagreement that we should be holding on to that money. Because their escrow's going to go up, their payment monthly's going to go up, they're going to want access to that money.
And at this point, we don't know how many people that is. I mean, how many people who qualified for this tax exemption still have a mortgage? We don't know.
We don't know? Their, you know, salary can change from year to year with their income, so we don't, there's too many variables.
So where are we with this? Are we going to table it and then put it?
Great choices.
Yep.
Can we, I was wondering if we could move to extend the deadline to September 2025?
Already did that.
We already did that.
Well, we can ask.
We amended this ordinance to include that extension.
Oh, okay, we can't vote on it because Max voted on it.
If we just vote on the ordinance as a whole, as amended.
Okay.
Max, the other part of this equation is extending the $40,000 of income eligibility to whatever CPI that can be done in the further table meeting that we're talking about, correct?
So here's the way this is going to play. If you table it, we're going to go back, we're going to type in the ordinance in the CPI thing, we're going to amend Section 4 to say it's September 1st, because you guys have already voted on that and functionally changed the ordinance. Then you will start from there in your debate discussion.
I personally don't see why we couldn't amend the Section A of, Section 1A, the $40,000, $46,000, or $47,000, whatever the more appropriate number is. So it's, so the only thing we have to discuss later is whatever the CPI number is, but that the later time we're just discussing, the $32,000 will be to, I don't know what.
But I think what Mr. Day was saying is it's probably, we might not be able to afford to do both.
I understand, absolutely.
And therefore, we might want to raise the amount of the value of the property that's excluded from taxation and keep the income level lower as sort of a compromise to not make quite as much hit on the budget. If we raise everything, that's the biggest possible hit on the budget. If we raise the income levels and we raise the amount exempted from taxation, then, you know, we're cutting into our revenue even more. Whereas, as Mr. Day suggested, if we start to raise the amount of the assessed value to be excluded from taxation, even if we keep the income levels a little lower, that might actually have a bigger impact on people.
No, I understand. The question I was having is if we make a change now, we can still change that income level later, then, you know, whatever the appropriate amount, so it doesn't really matter. We can, you know, we can debate it at a later time, it seems.
Okay, let's see, we've announced, we have a meeting a week from tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
And that gets announced tomorrow?
It's already been posted, but since it's more than seven days, I believe I can amend that agenda.
Yes, you may amend the agenda if it's more than seven days.
So we can amend the, post an amended agenda tomo, post it tomorrow for next Wednesday's meeting, and then move forward from there with perhaps more information, although I don't know how much more information's going to be available because we don't know how many more people would qualify at these higher levels.
Yeah, I think it would be great to know if we were already operating at 173 for the sake of the argument, that's the biggest kind of question I have. But yeah, I agree, we don't know. You know, right now it's 45,000. Is that 5,000 more because we're, you know, having 5,000 more property value that we're adding to the eligibility, potentially? I don't know, right? And that's just on people that are applying for it now, so is that, you know, I really don't know. So that's probably the biggest unknown here is what revenue-wise this could mean or lack of revenue.
We know the population today that has to be able to look at those items and see the impact of these on the ones that we have today. So can we evaluate those out?
I mean, we know already. Hasn't been that long, I just saw.
We know already, Councilman, I just shared that number. It's forty thousand.
I don't know about the current population of our community, which ones we can see that's affected.
Are you talking about the census numbers, any income numbers to?
Well, yes, with these numbers, we can see what is changing on how much they're going to be paying or not paying.
Are you saying change the assessed value number, not change the income?
Because that, we can't figure that part out.
We could, we could, in other words, if we raise the thirty-two thousand of assessed value to a hundred thousand, I'll just pick a number, then we could calculate, okay, for the, for the people who already qualify under the older limits, that we could calculate how much more loss of tax revenue that would be, correct? If we raise the amount of assessed value that's excluded.
It's a possibility, and it's a, it's an estimate.
All right.
But it has to affect the minimum impact, but we're not going to know the true value until people actually apply.
Right, I'm not, we can't know how many more people are going to meet the new income levels, but we can know of the people who already meet the current lower income levels. If we exempted a greater portion of the tax vest as value of their properties, how much more revenue that would be?
Just for those individuals.
Just for those people who met it for last year, or this current, we're still in fiscal twenty-five, so.
Yeah, but that, just keep in mind, that's going to be a really rough number, because, you know, you're not sure who else is going to qualify because of the income level.
Right, right.
Almost minimum, yeah.
Yeah. All right, then I move that we.
One more question, sorry, the disability. We talked about, there was another ordinance, or was it part of this ordinance that was triggered? I don't know if you could just update me. There was an, is that being discussed as well? Is it wrapped into here?
That would be, the first reading will be next.
Okay, thank you.
To include the disabled, yes. Because that was inadvertently admitted from this one.
Thank you.
Okay, I move that we table this ordinance until the meeting of, what is it, June eighteenth?
Second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next. Thank you, Mr. Walton, for keeping us straight.
Try not to stand up here unless I think it could be helpful.
Well, you do have a green tie, so, you know, every time you got a show of tie, you put on.
All right, the next item from all businesses, our business item number two, discussion, possible motion and vote on resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-five. A resolution requesting an amendment to the city of Newcastle municipal charter addressing different tax rates for types of property within the city. And this day is going to come across that.
Sure, can I get the read of the resolution?
You do.
So this resolution is just adding a few words in. We had previously passed an ordinance that would allow the council to, to charge different tax rates for different property within the city. Councilman Madoway and I had a meeting with a few large landlords and tenants and within the city, and they had some concerns with the ordinance, and they asked for a few words to be added back into it. So I'm proposing this resolution, and it adds the words "injust proportions" back into the language, and that's simply all it's doing. I believe we had our attorney look at this. I don't believe it substantially changes the ordinance, but it is something that I thought was worthy of, was having a change.
Councilman Day, can I put a just a little sharper point on this? There's a bill that we need the general assembly to change it. Didn't feel comfortable just going to the general assembly with that change, or council to act. Personally, I don't think it changes anything about the resolution whatsoever, but it's a political compromise in some sort, so therefore, I think the meeting remains exactly the same.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Sure.
So the just portions is just gives our same flexibility we had before. It was just amending language to make it sound that it's not the same portions. Or is that, is that correct?
The end was dead, that's correct.
So in the intent of it, it's not changing, it's just the language to make sure that, correct? Thank you for meeting with the stakeholders.
If there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amendment is stopped.
I'll refer this down to the state, to the board, add back to the.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash thirty, reappoints, it's to reappoint Alice Reel to the Flood Resiliency Committee. It's a brief resolution, I'll read it. Whereas Newcastle City Council established the Sea Level Rise Task Force by Resolution twenty-twenty-two dash oh-four, and whereas Resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-two converted that task force to a permanent committee known as the Flood Resiliency Committee. And whereas Miss Reel currently serves on this committee in a term which expires June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, she has agreed to be reappointed. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby reappoints the following person to the Flood Resiliency Committee, Alice Reel, Flood Resiliency Committee, term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Is there? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next resolution is twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-six, and this is essentially the same wording, it's a different person. It's Fred Gallagher is currently the trustee's representative on the Flood Resiliency Committee, since the establishing ordinance provided that the trust should have a representative. His term also expires June thirtieth. I believe, I don't have to read this.
You're correct.
So the only difference in the wording of this one from the wording of the one I just read is that it specifies that Mr. Gallagher is the representative of the trustees of the Newcastle Common. His term, current term ends June thirtieth. This year, his new term would end June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-seven, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Victoria Garrett to the Planning Commission. Whereas the city of Newcastle provides that the mayor of the city of Newcastle appoint nine members to the Planning Commission, subject to the confirmation by city council, each for three-year terms. And whereas there is currently one vacated position on the Planning Commission, and whereas the city council proposes to confirm the appointment of Victoria Garrett to a term on the Planning Commission, with this term ending on June tenth, twenty-twenty-eight. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council hereby appoints the following person to the Planning Commission, Victoria Garrett, Planning Commission, term ending June tenth, twenty-twenty-eight. Is Ms. Garrett here tonight?
No.
No. All right, well, she did, Mr. Gross, public comments are closed. She has provided information about her background at the city council. She grew up in Newcastle, and she has a background, she's given us her professional background as well. I will say that Ms. Garrett lives in a neighborhood that is not currently represented by all the Planning Commission, and I think particularly with the Planning Commission, it's important to have broad representation from throughout the city. So, you know, we.
Explain. Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approves.
Aye. This is a lot of body.
I would ask the staff to speak multiple times. Thank you.
It's corrupt.
Okay.
You'll be your president.
Resolution twenty-twenty-five dash twenty-eight, a resolution to establish the city of Newcastle Finance Committee. Whereas the city council desires to establish a city finance committee to review and recommend financial policies to the entire city council. And now there be a result that the city council hereby establishes a finance committee for the city of Newcastle to provide recommendations to the full city council regarding financial matters. Be it further resolved that the structure and goals of this committee shall be as follows. The members of the finance committee shall be comprised of the following: A, the city administrator; B, the city financial officer; C, the city treasurer; D, two members of council to include the city council president and one other member of the council to be appointed by the city council to the committee; and E, one resident of the city to be appointed by city council to the committee. The committee shall meet a minimum of one time per quarter. Additional meetings can be scheduled as necessary by the committee. I have two comments. Number one, I think item V, our city financial officer's title is finance coordinator, not financial officer, and I believe this should be corrected.
Yes.
Does that need a formal amendment, or is that just a clerical correction, Mr. Walton?
Clerical correction.
Okay, so a clerical correction to section B. Instead of financial officer, it will be the city finance coordinator. And the second comment I have, and this may need to be a formal amendment. This does not specify a term for the resident appointed to the committee, and I think it should be a three-year term, the same as all other committees. So I would propose an amendment to section one E to add, to make it read, one resident of the city to be appointed by the city council to the committee for a three-year term, adding those words. Is there a second to that amendment?
So are you making a motion to make that?
I'm making a motion to amend section one E, yes. I assume I need to do that, since that's more than just a clerical correction.
Correct.
Okay, so is there a second to my move, motion for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment only to add the words "for a three-year term" to section E? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now that we've taken care of those things, general discussion on this resolution.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I assume this is, you know, to ease the budget process, and it kind of formulated something like Delaware had the fact. But I would say, other than the member, the resident, I mean, I don't, we could do this without resolution, right, with the city administrator, the finance coordinator, treasurer, two members of council. But just bringing that up, and I will also say that, you know, I mean, I believe the current makeup is six on the committee, and you may want to add another resident to give us that odd number, but it's just a, just a, it seems to me that we may have some good financial resources in the city, with some city residents that would, that have, you know, good knowledge of budgets and taxes and stuff, to maybe able to participate on it, but just suggestions.
If I could just give a little bit of background, when I was administrator in another municipality, we had a finance committee, and it was very helpful to talk through some policies and talk over investment strategies with our investment advisor. And then, you know, we could review the quarterly statements more in depth than a regular council meeting, and it just provided an additional layer of review for, you know, policies and things that we want to look at. You know, for example, we are looking at creating different funds. This will provide, you know, a focused set of eyes on something like that. So just that insight, as, you know, I have experience with that.
I just realized, I think I skipped a line when I read this. Another member of the committee is the city treasurer. So there's, that does make five. The administrator, that's six, two members of council, right? But they don't vote, they merely give advice, right?
Correct.
So I don't know if that's an issue or not. Mr. Walton, it looks like you have something to say.
No, I was actually coming up for counsel with this, David, since you could do this generally what this resolution does, is it makes it, forms like a formal process.
I like the resolution. It goes, you know, alongside what city administrator was working on, creating a, you know, financial policy for the city. So I think it would just help kind of review those things periodically, what councilperson Madoway brought up with, you know, the Legacy Fund and with the capital stabilization and capital infrastructure. So I think it can help with a lot of those different things that, you know, are dynamic, and not necessarily all those details need to be part of the city. I'm, you know, I'm obviously worried about, you know, like, the comments that public has made about reappointments. What needs to be said is that we're lucky to have people willing to be appointed or reappointed to any of these committees, because it's a significant, you know, time commitment, even though it's only four meetings or twelve meetings a year, it's still a, you know, time that people have to dedicate to it. So I do agree that, and encourage her, about to attend all of the meetings that you're interested in, and having your voices heard, or at least emailing city administrator that can forward that to the chairs. But I also had the same idea of not only adding two for the voting, and it seems like we wouldn't even have residents vote, but just, I do, through the budget process, I've seen that there's a lot of residents interested in the budget process and have a lot of ideas. I think it would be nice to have even more opinions of people who are not looking at this stuff all the time, so we can have a little more of a diversity as it comes to the, you know, ideas going forward. So I would absolutely support the notion from councilperson Day to amend E to two residents of the city. Once again, you know, it's hard to say these things in general, so that's my biggest concern, but more ideas is absolutely something we need as a city. So I welcome this wholeheartedly.
I also would like to say, I think that the genesis of this committee, or the idea for this committee, was twofold. The establishment of the Legacy Fund means that we're going to be getting quarterly reports on investment, and this committee would review those reports. And the other thing is, if we establish the Budget Stabilization Fund and the Capital Improvement Fund, the, this committee could also advise on the management, I'll put it broadly, of those funds, more, and as well as the overall budget process.
To be clear, is this, is this a committee or a commission?
What difference does it make? What, I mean, if we call it a committee or we call it a commission, it's going to do the same thing.
Is there voting with one and not with the other? Because you don't want them to, they don't have a voting, they're just advisory.
Right.
Is that, is advisory more of a committee or a commission, or it really doesn't matter?
I don't think it matters.
I mean, it seemed to me that what matters is what we write in this ordinance, right? Because, or resolution, because it says to provide recommendations. So it's not a vote.
My only point with the odd members was I would assume the committee would vote on the recommendations that they're going to wish for the council. That was my only.
Sure, that's.
So if someone would have the desire to make a motion, if you wanted to add one person, make the one resident be two, that's, and then you would vote on that?
I would, I appreciate the fact of adding other members of the community because of the wealth and knowledge that we have in our community, recognizing that all other members of the committee are essentially city employees or appointees, so that one person essentially could be, could feel like they're isolated, quite honestly.
They would, by far, they would be appointed as well to this committee.
No, I'm looking at the current composition. So city administrator, there's.
The other resident would be appointed by the council to the committee.
For a two-year term, the same, three-year, excuse me, yes.
No, I understand that. I value, I wouldn't be in support of up to three residents, but the will of the council.
Then we get back to an even number.
Just to add on to that.
But they're not, they're not, they're just recommended, so they're not decision-making by.
No, but as Mr. Walton pointed out, they may vote among themselves to, should we recommend A or B? And if the committee has to vote whether, if there's disagreement among them, whether they should recommend, we do A versus B, then the odd number would be helpful.
Okay, so it's good enough.
So I agree with Council Madoway that we probably should have three. We might look at B for the city financial coordinator, make them as a non-voting member, and then have three residents. The first resident for one year, next resident for two, next resident for three, and then three-year increments.
Right, right, to stagger.
To stagger them.
Right, that's what we usually do with new committees.
Somebody need to make a motion.
A motion to strike section E of Resolution twenty-five, twenty-five dash twenty-eight. A, a motion to strike, uh, section E of Resolution 25, 25-28, from one resident of the city to three.
And, so I need to accept councilman's word to make the coordinator a non-voting member?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And to accept, uh, councilperson's else, uh, reference to make the, uh, B a financial coordinator, not, not voting.
So a voice but not vote?
Staggered.
Oh, and, and the staggered terms, I see.
And to, you haven't finished your motion, Adam, in a second, so you keep going. Do you support the staggered terms?
And staggered, uh, was it three-year?
Well, first, one person would be appointed for one year, one person for two years, and one person for three, so then, and then they could just be appointed for three years after that, but they wouldn't all be replaced at the same time. So you maintain institutional knowledge.
Yeah, stagger term limits for the initial terms, one, two, and three. Move to amend.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to change the Financial Coordinator to a non-voting voice but not vote member, and a resolution to change E to three residents of the city. Uh, one to be appointed for one year, one to be appointed for two years, and one to be appointed for three years, and thereafter appointments shall be for three years. Did I capture all of that? Okay. So all in favor of this amendment?
Aye.
The amendment passes.
I do like, uh.
Right, that's just the amendment, not the whole thing.
I do like the notion that, um, Mayor Leary brought up about advisory, and I wonder if we want to add Finance Advisory Committee in a name similar to the fax, um, a standing for advisory. Uh, I, I, I understand it's advisory body, but, uh, just, just another amendment I propose. And if that's something you guys are open to, I would then motion to make an Economic and Financial Advisory Committee, just because of the outcome of the FAC would come to say a new ceremony.
So would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to rename the, um, to establish a City of Newcastle Economic and Financial Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of amending the title for the name of the committee? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the, that amendment also passes. Okay, are we ready to vote on the entire resolution? As amended.
Yeah, that's, forgot about that.
Okay, all in favor of Resolution 2025 as amended by its title, by the role of Finance Coordinator, and by the number of residents to be appointed? Please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Get much practice? All right. Um, the next item is a resolution to approve a vendor permit application for Thanks-a-Latte LLC. This is a, I'll just read it, and then we can, the, whereas the City of Newcastle Code requires licensing of vendors within the City of Newcastle, and whereas Thanks-a-Latte LLC has petitioned to be considered for a vendor's permit and has supplied all of the required documentation, including required insurance, state health department certificate, and City of Newcastle business license. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Newcastle has granted Thanks-a-Latte a vendor's permit to sell food and drink items in calendar year 2025. Um, the council has the material with their permit application, copies of their letter of request, their Newcastle business license, their insurance certificate, and their Delaware Health, uh, Pub, Division of Public Health certificate, as well as a brochure about what they do. It's a, basically, it's a, a truck, but it's not a box truck size. It looks like a pickup truck with a camper on the back of it, it's about that size.
I think you were here.
Yeah, they were here. Yeah.
Yeah. And according to their letter, they are affiliated with, I think it was in their letter.
Yeah, yeah, it was, I forget where it said that.
Their, yeah, their sister franchise, Decona Ice, which already has a license here. So they just, they sell a different product than any of the other vendors. I mean, we have a vendor who sells hot dogs and sodas and chips. We have Decona Ice, which sells obviously ice cream. And now they are requesting a license to sell coffee and other beverages. I think they sell cold beverages to, or not.
Yes.
Hot and cold beverage, beverages, but no food apparently. So is there?
Motion to approve the vendor permit?
Can I ask a question first? Nothing to do with this part is, who's saying, but why do these come to council? Why can't the administration?
Because our code says they have a, a vendor's license. I don't, we have to change the code.
Okay, we should look into that.
I have just one question to, um, uh, City Administrator. Do you know how many, um, mobile truck vendors they have approved currently?
We just approved another one last year, but I don't think they ever came out.
They never showed up, yeah.
I think there's more.
Yeah, my main question was.
There will be.
Yes, okay. That's, yes. Perfect, thank you.
One question I have for City Administrator, I, even though the answer would just want to ask for the record. Dusk to dawn, is that, are those the essential hours for vendors? And I'm saying that because that's commensurate with, uh, the hours of battery park. And I would, I imagine they would be stationed essentially at the ward.
Do we need to specify that?
You don't specify for the other ones.
I mean, if the park closes at dusk, then, although that, I guess the part at the end is technically public street, not the park, right?
Again, I was, I was just asking, just one more, like a practice, like, again, it's, we're giving them the license, but, you know, is this a license to operate, you know, within certain time frames, or is this open?
Well, to be honest, as a vendor, would you station yourself at a place where the park was closed, so there would be no customers? But, I mean, that would be, and do you know, it did occur to me, do they have a thing that plays music or makes noise like an ice cream vendor does?
I don't think they did.
No?
But there's a, there's a part of the application that says that that's prohibited.
Right.
I remember somewhere earlier.
No, you look from vehicle, no vending.
Yeah, traffic restrictions on our cities.
Because I remember when we had an ice cream vendor, we specified that if they were parked for more than, I forget how many minutes, we specified, they had to turn off the music, so that the people who lived right next to it would go crazy.
Yeah, it's for a vendor, the music.
I, I don't know, uh, what our code says for vendors, you know, like if that's just something that, um, is already applied with our code, uh, but I'm excited to, you know, taste their coffee. I love coffee, I need it. So, what more? I'd like the bakery to have coffee, I'd love Marquise to have coffee. I make my own coffee, so, more coffee, the better.
Motion approved, a vendor permit. Back to you, Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion to the resolution is approved. Um, sec, item six is being deferred to the, to a future meeting because neither the City Planner nor the Chair of the Planning Commission could be with us tonight, and we there are equipped to, um, hear about the comp plan review. So we will skip item six. And the final item is a first reading, um, ordinance two, uh, 556, an ordinance to amend the City of Newcastle Municipal Code, Chapter 230 zoning regarding home occupations in the historic residence zoning district. As a first reading, I will simply read it, there will be no discussion or comments, and we will have a public hearing and discussion at a future meeting. Whereas the Council of the City of Newcastle, City Council possesses the authority to adopt, amend, modify, or repeal the City of Newcastle Municipal Code, City Code, and whereas home occupations such as an art studio, dressmaking, and professional offices of a lawyer, engineer, architect, or certified public accountant are permitted accessory uses in the R2 and R3 residential zoning districts. And whereas home occupations by definition retain the residential character and appearance of the structure and do not generate greater traffic volumes than would typically be expected in a residential district. And whereas the City Council finds that as in, as is the case in the R2 and R3 zoning districts, home occupation should also be permitted accessory uses in the HR Historic Residence Zoning District, subject to the standards enumerated in City Code, Section 230-1 definitions. And whereas the City Council has determined that it is in the best interest of the city and its residents to amend the City Code to expressly allow a home occupation as permitted accessory use, to allow a home occupation as a permitted accessory use in the HR Historic Residence Zoning District. Now therefore making the express finding that the provisions of this ordinance enhance and promote the health, safety, and welfare of the City of Newcastle, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Newcastle as follows. Section 1, City Code, Chapter 230, Zoning Code, Section 230-19A7, Historic Residence H, District HR, is hereby amended as follows, with deleted text identified by bold, striked through, and new language identified in bold, underlined text. Accessory, accessory use in structures, the renting of one room to transient, to non-transient rooms or orders, other accessory uses and structures clearly incidental and customary to and associated with the permitted use. The section to be added is C, customary home occupations as defined in Section 230-1 of this chapter. Section 2, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be unconstitutional or invalid, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 3, in the event any existing ordinance or parts of ordinances are in conflict herewith, the provisions of this ordinance shall control. Section 4, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by City Council. And I think that concludes our business for this evening, so does, is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.